All right, we're going to get the meeting started. I'm going to call the common council meeting to order and ask you to all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Michelle, could you help me out with the roll call, please?
Yes. Doug Saloga.
Present.
Jim Barron.
Here.
Jackie Valdi.
Here.
Wayne Dean.
Here.
Matt Kruemer.
Here.
Kevin Maples.
Here.
Tim Iker.
Here.
Kent Atwell.
Present.
Tom Hafner.
Here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Just so everybody knows, we're having some technical difficulties with YouTube and so forth tonight, so this meeting won't be recorded on YouTube. We'll probably be putting it up afterward, so it won't be live, but it is live on Channel 25. So, oop. All right, the first order of business tonight is a public hearing number one. Vacation of public right-of-way, the west half of Lake Street, a public road from Division Street to north of the alley and the entire public access alley south of Wells Street and north of Division Street from Lake Street to Oneida Street, City of Dellafield. This vacation will facilitate the development of an eight-unit multifamily residential condominium development. Is there anyone here to speak specifically to this public hearing? Is there anyone here to speak to this public hearing? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Move on to item number one, City of Dellafield citizens' comments. So this is your opportunity to come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and speak about anything that's on or off the agenda. So you'd simply go by whoever raises their hand first, and I call them to come forward, and we'll just take turns until everybody's had a chance to speak.
That's us.
There you go. Come on up.
Can you zip by the microphone?
Yep, zip by the microphone, because that's the only way people on Channel 25 and in a couple of days YouTube will be able to hear you.
Right. So my name is George Gunlock. I'm with the Dellafield American Legion, and we are here to talk about the American Legion and the things that we do for the community. Later on, we will be talking about the business of voting on the lease that we have with us. I'd like to thank the common council for giving us time to speak today. I'd also like to thank the American Legion family who came to show support. This is an important subject to us, and I'm happy to be given the chance to talk about it. The American Legion is made up of more than just veterans. The family consists of the American Legion, the Auxiliary, the Sons of the American Legion, and the Boy Scouts of America. We are a 100% volunteer organization, non-for-profit. From the officers of every branch right down to the Boy Scout leaders, they volunteer their time to give back to this community. We sponsor the Fourth of July Parade here in Dellafield, the Lucky Duck River Race, the Veterans Car Show, and for 94 years, we have sponsored the Coon Feed. In 2020, we are going to sponsor the American Legion Hardball Team. We'd like to take this opportunity to go over some of the things that the American Legion raises money for. We sold bricks for the Veterans River Walk. We sponsor teams from the local schools to build better boys. We're also proud to have the Boy Scout Troop 49 Venture Crew 196 as part of our Legion family, a troop that has produced over 80 Eagle Scouts. Twenty-five of them became Eagles since Legion has been their charter organization. We donate our time, we volunteer at the VA Hospital, we take time feeding homeless vets, and we raise money. Money that goes for the Ronald McDonald House in Milwaukee, homeless female veterans, the Zimbrick Memorial in Milwaukee, the Veterans Home in King, Wisconsin, VA Midwest Healthcare for Prosthetics, the Fisher House, Camp American Legion, Dry Hooch, Wounded Warriors on Water, Segways for Vets, the VA Hospital, and the homeless vets of Wisconsin. The Legion Hall is used for happy things like wedding receptions and family reunions, but we're also there for the hard times like the funerals and the memorials. We will always continue to support our community. We understand there are budgets to be considered. We have a budget as well. Removing the money that the Post receives from the City of Dellafield will negatively impact our budget, causing a shortfall that will have to be made up somehow. The money would have to be spent to maintain the baseball fields, the parking lots, snow removal, et cetera. This will cause us to decide which other organizations we can no longer support through our funding efforts. We'd like to thank the Dellafield Legion for helping out today, as well as the council here. If you still feel that you need to cancel this contract, we would ask that you table the motion for one more month, so we might be able to sit down and discuss alternatives that may benefit both us before you vote. Again, thank you for letting me have this time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Who would like to be next to come up and speak? Come on up, Ed.
My name is Ed Merrick, 1435 East Devonshire. I'd like to thank Mayor Ken Atwell and members of the common council for letting me speak today. I appreciate that. I am speaking on behalf of Boy Scout Troop 49, where I am a past scout master and the current charter organization rep for the troop and for American Legion Post 196. What that means is I'm a direct liaison between the Post and the troop. For the past five years, seven months, the Legion has been our charter organization. What that means is all scouting USA packs, troops, and venture crews and ships need a chartering organization to exist. We rely on the chartering organization for direction, support, both financially and mostly guidance. The Legion Post has made a huge impact on our troop over the five-plus years, more so than we could have ever experienced from our initial existence, which is over 40 years. Collectively, they bring to us what duty and service are. That includes duty to God, duty to our country, and our community. Over our time together and with their direct guidance, our troop has logged over 9,654 service hours for our community. Of those, 3,132 hours have been in 2019 alone. BSA puts a dollar value on service hours that's approved by the federal government at $24.69 an hour. So to see, by if the City of Dellafield's supporting the Legion, it appears a great cost, how do you value service in return at no cost to the city? Here's what you received in return that the city didn't have to pay for. In 2019, the value of our service hours is $77,329, and in the last five years, seven months, the total is $238,356. Example of service directly supported by the Legion is the building of the play area at Dellafield Presbyterian Church that everyone who drives by can see. Painting and repairing and cleaning at the Veterans Walk along the Bark River, the Scorekeeper's Hut at the Legion, horseshoe pits and stands at the Legion, refinishing at the Legion Pavilion and Play Area. And just so you know, that's a small example of Eagle Scout projects, and all of them are Eagle Scouts. I believe support is a two-way street, and by the city supporting the Dellafield American Legion Post 196, and the return the city has far exceeds a financial investment going one way. Everything, I believe, is a two-way street, and I'm proud to be associated with the Legion Post. And I could probably go on and on, but the support the city gives is immeasurable, and it goes in so many other ways than just our troop. Goes to the veterans' support, and that, to me, is priceless. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Who would be like to be next? Anybody else like to speak to anything on or off the agenda?
Glenn Ritz, 407 Indian Spring Drive, a city taxpayer. I understand budgets, but I also understand the Post. We talk about the benefits for the veterans and stuff, but another important item is Americanism. So when I march in, I'm a Marine Corps veteran. When I march in the Fourth of July Parade, I know in other cities you have to pay to get in the parade. When we march with the veterans carrying the flags and you see the families with the little kids waving the flags, it makes me feel wonderful. And I think that's something we're going to continue. We will continue regardless, but I think it's important that we stand for Americanism. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Thank you for listening to me tonight. My name is Mike Prue. I live in Wales, but I'm a member of the American Legion Post. A lot of what I was going to say has already been covered, and I don't have a report from our auxiliary as far as the money that has come in for donations this year, but just the Sons of the American Legion and the regular American Legion were around $8,000, and the Auxiliary actually donates more to all the vets than our other two organizations. And I would just like to ask you to not so much reconsider what you're thinking about doing, but sit down and negotiate or talk to us, get a little dialogue going. And if push comes to shove, we have to go off the tax roll, maybe we could get a city grant to help us out. All the money that we bring in to that Legion Post goes right back out to charity. It's that simple. We can continue, but we are not going to be able to donate to the charities that we have in the past if we have to continue with this lack of support. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the comments. Who would like to be next? Who would like to be next? All right. No other citizens' comments? All right, citizens' comments are now closed. Move on to item two, consent agenda. Is there a motion or anyone want to pull anything?
Can we move items C off the consent agenda?
Okay. Is there a motion for A and B?
Make a motion to approve items A and B in the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes. Item 2C, disallow of Dotto's special assessment claim based on the recommendation of the city attorney and the city's liability insurance provider. Mr. Dean?
I just wanted to get a little bit more clarification. I know, Tom, you can add a little bit more background to this as to what Susan Johnson did or did not do and whether the city is liable. I just want more discussion on it before I vote it.
The Dotto family, they purchased a house in the city about a year ago, and at the time, they were not notified of ordinance in the municipal code that said that if you have access to a sanitary sewer, but you're not currently connected, you don't have to connect to it unless certain things occur. And one of those things is you sell the property. So they indicate that they were not notified of that. Then when they, they've sold the property recently, and this time when the title company contacted Susan, Susan made the title company aware of that ordinance on the book, and the Dottos are now claiming damages for the cost of making the sewer connection and paying sewer connection fees and whatnot. And our city attorney and our insurance liability provider has opined that it is not the city's responsibility to notify the property owners of what the laws are. Essentially, ignorance is no excuse for not following the local, the city ordinances.
Okay, that's why I wanted to clear that it's their responsibility to understand the ordinances.
Correct.
It wasn't that we communicated the ordinance to them incorrectly.
Correct.
Okay.
So a follow-up question is, what was a catalyst for us identifying that the connection needed to occur? And I guess, how is that applied as a policy from the city? Like if this was a similar situation that, I mean, it's likely to occur other places in the city, and it has. What's the catalyst for making that notification?
The catalyst is the title company contacting us and asking if there's any outstanding assessments, things like that in the past. And most recently, Susan typically lets them know of the ordinance requirement, although she's not required to, and in the first case of the Dotto sale, she did not.
Gotcha. Okay. Because I mean, on the form, it doesn't, whatever. I agree with the attorney's assessment, is what I'm saying, but I just want to make sure that there's a process in place where we normally would call this out on the first instance.
That is the case, yes.
Okay. Good.
Then I move to approve item 2C, disallowance of the Dotto special assessment claim based on the recommendations from the city attorney.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes. All right, we'll move on to 3A, licenses.
Discussion and possible action to approve a regular Class B liquor and beer license to Applebee's located on Golf Road. This approval is due to a change in ownership that was effective on October 1st. They can't just give the license to the new owner, so we have to make a motion for them to be able to do that.
So move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Dean's the second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes. Okay, 3B. Plan Commission, Mr. Iker.
So while I was in a rare absence of the Plan Commission last month, all of the one through six of these items for activity here are items that were discussed and acted on in August, I believe. And this has to do with a condominium development that's right across the street here and deals with vacation of streets and certified survey map and et cetera. Assuming we need to take these one at a time?
We do, yes.
All right. So.
Could I say some, for the record, I have an interest in this, so I won't be participating in the conversation or voting either way. So it's on the record.
Yeah, understood. A brief synopsis from my chair, maybe Tom or the mayor can expand, but the developer went through a couple different iterations of their proposal, one a little more dense and a couple where we, the Plan Commission, made suggestions on appearance, you know, how to, what access would look like, and also expanding the change in the certified survey map to include the same type of, if you want to call it a benefit, the same type of change in the lot lines to the surrounding, you know, the neighbors adjacent to them. And they were very, very good to deal with and almost verbatim took the Plan Commission's suggestions and just put them into work. And so we love every developer to be this responsive, and it worked out well, and I think we have a good product. They have a good product, and I think we have a good result that fits in with the zoning and everything else. So it's right across the street, and it just deals with some lot issues. I think if you've been following the Plan Commission or previous meetings or looked at the minutes, this is well-traveled territory, and I think we're just dealing with the developers' agreement and other things that go through legal, right?
Pretty much.
So, I mean, I'll go through and make the motions, first of all, to vacate portion of Lake Street per item, what is this, 2B, 3B.
3BI.
Aye. To do the vacation of the Lake Street.
Second. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed? Abstentions passes.
And then.
One abstention.
Great. I have you listed for all of the items.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And also, item 3B double I, or 3B2, to, yeah, what do we have to do?
You want me to take this?
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
All right. So 3B2, we're looking for a motion to approve the certified survey map for the Condo Development Incorporated.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes.
Item 3B3, we're looking for approval of a conditional use permit for Condo Development Incorporated.
So moved.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes.
Item 3B4, we're looking for approval of a developers' agreement for Condo Development Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes.
Item 3B5, we're looking for approval of a stormwater maintenance agreement for Condo Development Incorporated.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes.
And lastly, item 3B6, we're looking for approval of abandoning an existing easement that will no longer be used for sanitary sewer for the Condo Development Incorporated. They're relocating the sewer to the building.
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes.
Thank you, Tom. We talked about this in more plain language in the Plan Commission, so I appreciate the help. Another item, if you look at the minutes, there's been ongoing discussion regarding change in zoning for CBD 1 downtown relative to building heights, setbacks, et cetera. And as is clear from how the deliberations have taken place and how citizen feedback has taken place, this has not been rushed. There's been lots of give-and-take discussion with the members of the Plan Commission as far as what's intended for the purpose of downtown, what we envision is consistent with the master plan going forward. And so, again, it was not, nothing was changed. Ideas for change were passed unanimously in my absence, but it's coming back for some technical issues to discuss at the end of this month, and so that would be likely the final say in a proposed change.
So it's going back to plan?
The Plan Commission is going to have it on the agenda for the end of this month, and then it will be coming to us, any proposed changes, if it passes there. So look for that, and then read the minutes for further information about September.
Thank you.
And that's the end of that.
Great. Did you have any questions, Jackie?
He answered it.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wondered, he said it was coming back, and he meant to plan, and that's where I needed to.
It's been about 11 kicks at this cat.
Yeah, lots of them, yeah. Don't kick cats.
Okay, now we'll move on to C, like Welfare Committee.
There was no meeting, so there's no report. Next meeting is this Wednesday, October 9th.
Okay. Next, item D, Parking Rec Commission, Mr. Kruemer.
I also had a rare absence. I would refer you to the minutes.
Great, thank you very much. E, Public Works Committee, Mr. Dean?
I asked that this item, discussion, possible action, reconsider stop signs before we stop the intersection of Main and Main to be put on the agenda because, though I made the motion and we passed last council to put a four-way stop there, and the Public Works, as we looked at how to do that, put a four-way stop there, some other things came up, and so I thought we should probably have a little bit more discussion on it. If you look at where Gary's auto body is, there's not a curb there, so there's just a, like, I think there's a drain manhole cover there, Tom. We'd have to think about putting curbage in there. To put the curb on Main Street where there's a stop sign there, the way we, I mean, a curb out there now, if we put a four-way stop in there, actually, there's a parking spot that blocks it, so you couldn't see it anyway. So I just started looking and thinking, you know, we're trying to make that intersection safer, and I'm wondering if we could do that by just putting, where the current stop sign already is on what I know, north and south, just a simple sign, cross-traffic-does-not-stop to warn those people to stop and look and realize that it isn't already a four-way stop. And you may choose to, I mean, the action has already been made to go ahead and approve a four-way stop, and you may choose to go that way, but I just thought we could also reconsider it and send it back to Public Works with that recommendation to look at the options of putting, you know, that cross-traffic-does-not-stop sign and other things that are less expensive than the additional curbage and some of the other signage that would have to go in there. So this was instigated by me, which obviously, even though I was the one who recommended the stop sign to begin with, I think that sometimes we can see things from a different way. So the only drawback after talking to the chairman of the Public Works, Dan Jzinski, today was we had thought about being able to fund that through, help me, Tom, through the additional cost.
Through the street improvement program for this year?
Yeah. If we still approved and looked at it and when Public Works approved it at our next meeting, and I think we can still get it in this year, but I just wanted to have a discussion, what you guys thought, is that something that we could send back to Public Works to look at those other options, or just keep it as it is and go ahead and put a four-way stop sign in there with the additional cost?
Wayne, let me just add, you know, the bigger issue, the biggest issue is at the southwest corner of Main and Main, and this picture you're looking at now is out of date. There are bumpouts that are already there.
Yeah.
But the bumpout that's there does not go out far enough. Another unique thing about this picture is there's nobody parked on Main Street, which is very unique. There's parking right up to the radius there, and in order to get the stop sign far enough out that motorists would see this, which is critical to making sure we don't do something that causes this intersection to become more of an accident problem, we're looking at probably having to do about a $5,000 to $8,000 concrete curb project. And the direction from Public Works Committee was to move forward with that and try to talk to our current contractor doing the street resurfacing program, because we do have some remaining funds this year, to try to see if you would do that as a change order. But then Wayne contacted me late last week and asked about putting this on the agenda for reconsideration as he's proposing with the cross-traffic-does-not-stop signs.
Question. As a feasibility of a four-way light, flashing light at that location, been considered?
We didn't talk about that, but we didn't go any further with it.
Because of cost or?
Yeah, and whether there was the cables going across there and whether we're really creating more of a problem. Anything you want to add to that discussion that we had?
Well, we were talking about, in order to call attention to the signs, if we don't put them out as far as we would like to at a bumpout, to possibly light up the signs themselves, either with a light right above it, or else they've now got the LED around the perimeter of the stop sign that flashes, on and off.
What about a hanging stop sign, not a flashing stop sign, just a hanging sign?
Well, both the things you've described, I mean, just, we don't have any of those in the city now, right? So.
That doesn't mean that it's not a feasible option, though.
Right, but it would take a lot of consideration, I think, by a lot of people, that those types of things start to change the character.
Well, I think everybody here agrees it's not a safe intersection. I happen to go by the accident, one accident that recently happened there, so I think something needs to be done.
Well, I mean, our accident history is extremely minimal at that intersection. Extremely minimal. And we've identified one opportunity right now, that stop bar and stop sign that's currently there at the, would be the southeast corner. We're going to move that forward, we're going to move that north. We're going to move that forward, we're going to move that north about four feet. We think that's going to get people out and able to see traffic better under the current conditions.
So I'm wondering, if we're doing this in a hurry, that costs a lot of money, would this be something that we should just put into next year's plan?
So the Public Works Committee...
I mean, we did this with crosswalks up on Genesee Street when, at the last minute, we should have more crosswalks, and then I think the city wisely said, why don't we just consider it within a year or two? And then they put it into the capital plan the subsequent year, and it was almost a nothing. And I'm just thinking, this, it looks like there should be some study here. You've got people, crosswalks potentially, should we just throw it out here and say...
So just to remind you, like a couple of years ago, two or three years ago, we added bump outs at the southwest and northwest corners that aren't showing on here. So we spent significant money there, but we didn't bump it out far enough to harbor a stop sign at this corner. And then at least the request from Public Works was, knowing that there are funds available in this year's street improvement program, and they were under the impression that the council wanted to move forward with stop signs, that to try and get it in with this year's project. They said if there's not enough funds left, then put it in the next year's project.
Yeah, and what's the estimate for the construction here? I think you told me before...
Five to $8,000.
Five to $8,000.
And will that be a complete solution here?
Yes.
I'm just wondering if these other corners...
It'll be a complete solution as recommended by the Public Works Committee.
I personally think the stop sign should go in.
I do, too.
Jim, let me add that as far as a complete solution, that's just bumping out the southwest corner. At the northeast corner, our plan right now, and we're not positive that this will work well, it was just to paint the white fog line around the radius, and that that will keep people away from the stop sign. It's possible that you'll still have people taking the corner too sharply, catching it with trailers and things like that. And if that becomes the case, then we would have to come back and put a curb radius in there as well. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I agree with that. I just think, given what this corner looks like, I could see it's going to have to be more formal ultimately. And that probably involves curves on all corners, so...
I think it deserves reconsideration by the Public Works and do it right instead of rush to order and then regret what we think is the good idea. I think when there's a little bit of caution, let's consider it and come back with maybe a smarter way to control the intersection.
If we do put it up to our next meeting next month, will we still have time for the funding of this year as we talked about?
Well, I mean, the funding doesn't go away. It's still in our capital project fund, and it can be used towards the project next year, just decrease...
That's my feeling, is if it's put in the bidding packet in January or February, ultimately, I think it's cheaper.
That's true, too. That's a good point.
So if we carry the money over, I think just plan it instead of doing it as emergency. Right now, everyone's scampering with the weather to get their work done, and I'm sure the number's going to be high.
Yeah, and I think Public Works was under the impression that the council wanted this taken care of ASAP, given the accident that occurred and whatnot.
I would share their...
I like the four stops, the four-way stop, but I think we should approach it the way we did this crosswalks in Genesee.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
We can do that, and that'll give us opportunity to have SEH draw up a plan and take it to Public Works Committee, have them approve it, and then get into our bidding packet for next year.
So do we need a motion?
Yeah, we do need a motion.
No, we don't need a motion if we're going to go with the four-way stop. We already have that. We've already got that approved.
Yeah, we've had a discussion. I'd like to see it captured and a recommendation in that motion sent back to Public Works.
I would make a motion that we continue with the plan for a four-way stop and put it into next year's capital budget after everything has been reviewed and engineered.
Second? Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Passes.
Okay, thank you. That's my report.
Thank you. Okay, F, Delhart Commission, Mr. Iker?
We did have a meeting, and we approved, we got bids in for the upgrade for the plant two weeks ago, and we approved the winner, which was still, they were all really close, but it's about somewhere between $3 and $3.5 million to upgrade from a sand filtration to disk filtration, add UV lighting. And this will be, this is something we needed to do almost anyway, and it will satisfy requirements for phosphorus limits moving forward, and we're well below them, and it's a necessary upgrade anyways. Anyone's interested in hearing more about it or participating in some of the milestones where we might be touring it, just get in touch with me or Scott Lujak at Delhart, and be happy to give you a little show and tell. Not a lot of excitement usually around water treatment facilities, but this is a big thing, and we're doing the right thing. So aside from that, we just went through and approved our budget as well, which things are going well. So no worries. So that's it for Delhart.
Great, thank you much. Okay, G, Police Commission, Mr. Sloga?
Yeah, no meeting, no report.
Okay. H, Library Board, Ms. Valdi?
No meeting since our last council meeting. Our next Library Board of Trustees meeting is tomorrow, 6:30 right here.
Sounds good. Okay, I, Zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Barron?
No meeting.
No meeting, no report. J, Promotion and Tourism Commission, Mr. Sloga?
Yeah, no, excuse me, no meeting since the last council, next meeting's tomorrow morning.
Okay. K, Lake Country Fire and Rescue Commission, no report. L, Lake Country Fire Board, Mr. Grimmer?
Yes, one adjustment to the budget that was made. The budget was passed and then repassed in the last week. It came to the chief's attention, and Marie and a few others, that there was a state law that allowed combined departments like Lake Country Fire and Rescue to raise their levy limits, to allow those cities to raise their levy limits 2% plus CPI since they were a combined department. Because of that, Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board decided to change the allocation of funds in the budget. The budget increases are the same as were passed. However, instead of using the unassigned fund balance to offset that, the increases that the municipalities would have to pay in 2020, the board voted to use that unassigned fund balance and just write checks out, essentially, to the municipality in January of 2020. This will allow the city to maximize the benefit under the law moving forward, and so that's what they voted to do. So that's the only, there was the increase that I mentioned last year, or last meeting with the health insurance, but that was the only adjustment. There's no increase in spending, it's just kind of shifting the chairs around a little bit.
In layman's terms, I think what you did is you had that amount categorized as an expense to the Lake Country Fire Department, and with the expense, it increases your expense budget, and it allows the municipalities to take a better, a larger adjustment to their levy limit.
I thought mine was the layman's explanation.
Okay, sorry.
But yours sounds a lot better, Tom.
Other than that, no report, the combined meeting was last week, went well.
That's good. Thank you very much. Okay, you're up again, Tree Board?
No meeting, no report.
All right. Dear Management Committee, back to Mr. Dean?
Passing out statistics of my report. We have over 147 approved hunters participating in the program already this year, compared to 108 total of all last year. Those 147 hunters have made 266 appointments. The appointments to hunt can only be made 21 days in advance, so that somebody isn't already going up and blocking all the times for January. But so far, we've 266 appointments. Mostly appointments just are in the afternoon. Overwhelmingly, the number of appointments in the afternoon is most popular. We're working really close with the town of Delafield. Town of Delafield has worked with us. We've opened up another stand, firehouse number two down here at the end of Highway C. Down here is actually one of our most popular locations. Taking out a lot of deer out of there, already four already, just, and it's only been open for two weekends.
I'm sorry, which one is that?
Fire Station Number Two.
Number Two.
South, past Lanthem Peak, Pat Park.
Okay.
It's in the town. The town has also allowed us, and we've put the kiosk for our chronic waste testing. CWD is over at the old town hall, just to the east of Century, in their highway department. So I go by there every day and check out like there's two heads in there. There are four in there today, and there's four in there the other day. So people drop off the heads for CWD testing. We're the only municipalities that have participated in the adopt a kiosk program. So the, matter of fact, the DNR is coming out on Friday to do a story on how well the city and town are working together on our deer management program. So they'll be citing it in the DNR publications to try and get other towns to follow what we've been doing. So just quickly, we're, so far, we're at about 16 deer have been reported. That doesn't count anybody that's doing it on their private land. And the thing that is working the best actually is our matching hunters with private property owners. We need more. We only have 12 landowners, and I've got over 78 hunters that are willing to be matched with any private individuals that want to love deer hunting on their property. But I just will tell you, I'm excited. Remember, we're at 16 deer harvest already. We only did, for us, without the sharpshooters, 54 total all of last year, and we didn't start until November 21st. So we're way ahead of where we were, obviously, last year, and things are going great. So thank you to all the people on the deer management committee. Thanks to Susan, Molly, and Michelle, the girls upstairs, because they take a lot of the calls before they send them to me. So that's my report.
Any questions? I'd be glad to answer.
I'll just say, thanks a lot, Wayne. You're doing a ton of work, and this is a huge education effort between the postcards and just you have seen your emails, and you are, even my questions, you're giving me more info than I ask for sometimes.
Is that a bad thing?
And I use it all, so just, I really, this is a big thing, so thanks a lot.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Yeah, and for those folks that are watching us on TV, we've had a lot of people over the last several years talk about wanting to manage the herd, and we've only got 12 private property owners. We really need you to contact us, so please do that so that we can do a better job of managing it. And just one technical issue, Wayne, I obviously love partnering with the town of Delafield, but if we could maybe just keep our numbers separate so we know what we're doing in the city and what we're doing in the town?
They are. Around here, like the town is firehouse number two.
Oh, is that the only one? Because I don't know.
That's the only one now. We've got a few more that were approved today by the county park over in the Peewaki Lake area, that we'll put, two more over there, but those are, we're keeping all the numbers up. They get separate tags from the DNR than we do.
Okay, got it.
People go to the town hall to get their nuisance tags there, and they come here for our, so they're completely separate.
Got it. Great, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to, for A, unfinished business. Discussion, possible action regarding the lease between the city of Delafield and the Delafield American Legion. The Park and Recreation Commission recommended termination of the lease at their August 26th meeting. It was on September 16th, 2019 Common Council meeting, and was postponed until today. It gave us an opportunity, the postponement, to meet with the American Legion and make them aware. I'm aware of the discussions that had taken place with the Park and Rec Committee, and I think we had some good discussions there. But maybe you can, Matt, go through kind of the conversations that we had at the park. You participated in it at the Park and Rec level, and then maybe Tom can follow you with some of the city details.
Sure, absolutely. And Park and Rec, a couple of months ago, took a look at the utilization of the field there, and it's not overly complicated, it's just not being used, plain and simple. I know certain, I know it's been suggested that leagues aren't popular anymore, and it's not just this particular park that's not being utilized, but others as well. And given that lack of utilization, it was proposed, moved, and agreed upon to end the lease with the American Legion.
But the termination of the lease now wouldn't take effect until next year. If we terminate it now, it still goes for all of 2020 and ends December 31st, 2020.
It's approximately a year.
Right.
Correct, Tom?
Yeah, it's interesting termination language. It talks about how if you provide written notice before, 60 days before December 31st, that it terminates at the end of the following year. And if you provide notice 60 days before June 1st, it terminates at the end of this, at the end of that year. So essentially, if we provide notice by the end of October, it terminates end of next year. And if we provide notice 60 days out of June 1st, it terminates at the end of next year.
Either way.
So what is our annual cost? And I know you summarized it.
Yeah, there's significant expenses, and, you know, the one thing that the city did get out of this lease, and the purpose for the city entering into this lease, was it was a high demand for recreational activities that required ball fields at the time. And this saved the city from acquiring property and building a ball field and all those costs. As indicated, there's no longer a need for the field by the city and the recreational programs. We pay an annual lease to the Legion that's in the ballpark of $8,000 a year. We pay the sewer bill, which is in the ballpark of $500 a quarter. We do all the lawn cutting, all the snow plowing. We have bought numerous, there's a list in your packet of all the different things that the city has paid for over the years, everything from roof and shingles on the baseball storage shed, picnic tables, glass block windows in the restroom, garbage cans, a new backstop for the basketball field, a new aluminum bleachers. Just going through all the expenses that Paul could recollect and identify. He identified over the course of the lease from 2004 to 2019, so about 15 years, about $44,000 in expenses above and beyond that $8,000 annual lease payment and the quarterly sewer bill. And that doesn't account the labor that goes into...
It's $11,000 a year, roughly, if you take $44,000 divided by 15.
So back in 2003, the idea is kind of was discussed, I think I just want to kind of state it was, you know, the city decided to treat that area as a park. And so all the type of expenses that you're talking about are the same type of expenses we would have in some other park, right? Not the Legion building itself, but there's also new backstops and new fenced, is that in there? I believe? So that's why those expenses took place, because the city want, you know, treated it like a park.
So it's like any other park in the city?
It was just treated just like any other park.
Like Miami's Park, they're going to spend the money on the bleachers and the yard and the lawn cutting. Do kids play soccer now? Is it possible to convert the field to soccer? Because I really, I have some issues with terminating leases, because we make, I mean, if I'm a renter and I'm getting a lease, or I sign a lease with somebody, and it's for 20 years, I expect it to last 20 years, not 17, because we're trying to cut corners. I understand the budgeting, I really do, but I have a problem with the language in here, particularly in this memo where it says it provides no benefit. That's kind of harsh in my mind. Now, maybe if kids aren't using it, maybe we need to get creative with how we use the fields, since we're in a lease, do they play soccer? They certainly seem to, in my observation as a teacher, so I see them play. So, yeah, I just, I'm uncomfortable with terminating a lease. We can jump in and spend $6,000 on a survey for walkways that aren't in the budget, but things that should be in the budget because we're in the lease, where we want to cut. So I'm uncomfortable with it for that reason.
Just for information, there is soccer fields at Cushing Park, and unfortunately, those, I don't know if those get used, but... those, I don't know if those get used, but I live in the area and I never see them used.
Yeah, I'm just wondering.
I appreciate trying to find a solution.
Yeah, just trying to find a solution rather than cut the lease.
I agree with Jackie in that, you know, we can find ways to spend money for certain surveys and certain other things. And this is, you know, an area that I support, that I think we should seriously consider, you know, keeping the lease.
Let me play devil's advocate. And I absolutely support the Legion and they went through a whole litany of the wonderful things that they do. And their argument of pure Americanism pulls at my heartstrings and absolutely I'm a patriot. Having said that, and all the wonderful things they do, but there are plenty of nonprofits in our community that we don't subsidize. We don't subsidize the Lake Country Women's Club or the Lions or we don't subsidize the Delafield Community Fund or Friends of the Bark River. And it essentially would be a subsidy of the American Legion, in my mind. I don't know what we are getting, and this isn't the, I mean, this is the taxpayer who wants us to use their money wisely and I don't know what we're getting in return, what they are spending their money for in return for this subsidy. And it breaks my heart to say that. But I do have to stand on principle as much as the Legion does absolutely wonderful things. The Fourth of July, the car show, the Lucky Duck, the coon feed, their money goes to benefit, you know, the River Walk, the Badger Boys, the Ronda McDonald House, the Veterans Home, the Fisher House, all of these wonderful charities. Having said that, we don't subsidize any other community organizations out there.
And Matt, did they, Park and Rec recommend this unanimously? Can this terminate the lease?
I believe so.
Well, I understand why they did because they're being pushed to cut costs because we have a budget problem.
A serious budget problem.
That's what's driving us. But, and I think we're off the mark a little bit talking about the charities in this net. The city had a problem at one point where they were going to spend a lot of money and build a park that we would have had to maintain forever. And someone came up with the idea, we have a solution here because we have a park near us that would open it up to the public. I have a feeling most of the public don't know that the resource is there. And we relied on it because we were looking to find ball fields for these teams that we were promoting. So I, you know, I think if we're going to cut back on it, I think we need to take a longer-term perspective. And I see a number of items in this budget and maybe we aren't going to be buying shingles or, you know, stands or anything like that anymore. But I think before we just terminate this, I think we should look at the existing lease that goes 20 years and then with some notice that it may not continue or we have to ramp it down and say we just can't pay as much.
So can I summarize? I think what I heard you say was that we would continue to make the payments, we just wouldn't treat it like a park anymore and manage the property as if it was a park?
That's where I'm going. I'm thinking that, but with the idea that someday it probably will terminate unless we choose to view that as a public park. And I don't know that it is, it shouldn't be. I mean, it's additional green space that people are asking from us to provide. And we did avoid a big capital project. I believe, I recall, after we purchased the land up on Oakwood, which is a good long-term investment for the city, but we've avoided spending hundreds of thousands or even millions of dollars up there on ball fields. And to that extent, we now are saving money. So, you know, I think before we on a very short-term basis just cut this off, I think we should take, we, we're going to have to figure out a way to do it without doing it next year.
Well, yeah, thanks, Matt, for taking unpopular, common sense stance on just the numbers involved here. And, you know, I agree with everything you said. Some of the issue here is, you know, like Jackie mentioned, is obviously it's utilization and where there's, there's fees for different usages in the park, in the parks that we have for, you know, renting of a fish hatchery, the league fees for the Fireman's Park ball field. And the utilization rate dropping like this, I don't know, I don't know how the fee structure is set for American Legion Park.
Michelle can briefly answer that if you want to know.
What happens with the fees for American Legion Park? Where do they go?
Complicated.
To say the least. But not compared to other areas, other places in the area?
That's actually a fine answer. Yeah, that's actually a fine answer. So knowing at least short-term that there's no difference between any kind of a move today versus March, end of March next year, I'm against action on it today. But there needs to be a concerted effort from a business standpoint to figure out how the utilization can increase. I mean, we have a partnership with Heartland on their recreation resource and their, how they've got, they've got structure to theirs and they've got actually a full or part-time person, I think, that runs their activities. We've got the brochures upstairs. And I do know people that have looked for ballparks to practice and do other things and it could be a simple marketing thing and I bet American Legion would bite that off, you know, along with every flag that gets waved, a flyer for bring your ball team to our field, right? Or something, I mean, or, you know, at the coon feed and the other events. But I think there's an opportunity to advertise it to get the income to support the budget that's there based on the type of investment that we put in. We can't, I don't think we can ignore it as a park resource, maybe just look at it more of a maintenance than a long-term infrastructure improvement program with fences and things. But yeah, we can't let it fall into disrepair. Like we've got to put shingles on it where there's, shingles are needed, but I'd be all for moving this out to give the opportunity for the city and the Legion to come up with a business plan to negotiate on how they can make this, the economics of this work better. And it needs to be something that needs to be reviewed long-term. Putting this under scrutiny is totally appropriate, having this boil, bubble up to where it is right now. And, you know, we do have to look at this like everything else in the city as...